Hammond City Agenda. Public hearing. Call to order, roll call.
Johnny Blunt. Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing. Number one. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the acceptance of property from the state of Louisiana for roll transfer credits and to provide for related matters. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council. I think you probably may remember what this was all about, but let me recap because we now have all of the reconciled numbers. Back in 1997, the city of Hammond was able to move a lot of the utility lines that it had, and we're talking primarily water and sewer lines, along with some of the energy lines that the city was responsible for, in order for the DOTD to expand Highway 190 westbound out to Winn-Dixie. Again, the city entered into an agreement with the Department of Transportation that the balance to do this project was $490,276.7. The city had an agreement that they would pay back one-tenth of that each year, $49,276.60 each year until paid. Well, the city paid, made one payment in 1997 of $49,027.61, which left a balance due to Department of Transportation and Development of $441,248.46. As I mentioned at previous meeting, there was a hope that this amount that was due to the state would actually be forgiven by the state. And by the way, the city of Hammond was not the only entity governmental body that had this agreement with DOTD. At that time, there was a total of $3.3 million worth of projects that were approved for utility relocation assistance. Now, with, I guess, with the state of affairs and the state of Louisiana, to give you an update, we did actually apply to, for a permit with DOTD for us to be able to do, I forgot exactly what the project was, but we needed an approval from DOTD. And they brought up to us the fact that we did owe them, and they had said $490,000, but when we started checking, it is $441,000. They have come to the city, and they have done this with a lot of different governmental entities, that they would like for the city of Hammond to acquire certain streets that are currently state highways. And the two highways that we are looking at right now, as I have mentioned, is the Church Street Extension from North Morrison Boulevard going all the way out to where 190 intersects with Church Street Extension. And also, they have Cherry Street, North Cherry Street, which is right here, which goes northward. So, we have negotiated with the DOTD, and they have indicated to us that if the city of Hammond is willing to accept these streets into the city system versus the state system, that they would give us certain transfer credits. And the amount of those transfer credits are $328,424.96 for the Church Street Extension, and the Cherry Street Extension would be $112,619.92 credit. This is a total credit of $441,044.89. I'll remind you that the balance was $441,248.46, so this leaves a balance of only $203.57 in cash that we would pay to DOTD. There was one issue that came up, and that was, do we get the streets as they are? And the answer to that is, they will completely rehab the street prior to our acceptance of the streets into the program. And that is included in the ordinance. Mr. Kudrain suggested that we include it in the ordinance, and it is under the condition one that you have proposed in the ordinance. So, I do recommend acceptance of this, and it will, it will put this particular matter to rest forevermore. Be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Public hearing number two. An ordinance to amend the budget for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 to defund and abolish the part-time position of Department of Secretary Fire Department. Go ahead, Savannah.
Good evening.
Good evening, Laura.
Mr. President, this item is more of a housekeeping mechanism. Since we approved, since the council approved the full-time position in the fire department, we're just removing and abolishing this part-time position that was there.
Are there any questions from the audience? Thank you. Public hearing number three. An ordinance to transfer $12,500 to Airport Tower Project. And we will not be able to use by them until...
That's probably a good idea. Good evening. Basically, we just took a few thousand out of each account that we are hoping that we can spare out of those accounts, but to fund the anticipated change order to finish the tower project. The fire marshal acquired a tamper evident system that had to be powered all the way at the end of the street from the tower, so running that electrical line, providing that sensor and everything, including some cabling in the shaft of the tower for if anybody has to go in there to fix a leak or anything like that. They have safety cables, and they'll be installed, you know, just OSHA requirement type stuff. They have to climb that 40-foot ladder up in there. So, that kind of stuff that we didn't anticipate. So, the, we were anticipating a change order of about $12,500, so we're asking to move that money from our budget to this Airport Tower Project account. And I'll entertain any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience?
Jason asked, how far are we from completion?
Construction complete, but the radios and equipment and everything else, we were hoping for December 15th. That's the anticipated date. That's the date we're pushing to all of our subcontractors for the equipment. They're actually installing all radios and stuff today. Cabinets were supposed to be today, they'll be tomorrow.
So, when will it be operational? Fully staffed?
When, when the, the guard is ready to go, as soon as they're ready, as soon as they can turn it on and test it, they'll start talking. So, about the 15th, 16th, when it's finished and able to turn on and test, they'll start talking to people. It'll be on an advisory-only status for at least 30 days until they can complete their CTO certification.
And I recommend to the audience to get an opportunity to go and take a look at your Airport Tower. It's a gorgeous job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a fly a plane.
Public hearing number four. An ordinance to approve replication of a 0.236 acre portion of Pine Crest Drive and Oak Hollow Drive right-of-way and minor re-subdivision of Lot 25, and the proposed abandoned right-of-way into Lot 25-A. Evoque re-subdivision requested by Michael and Betty Diamond located at 516 Pine Crest Drive. All in accordance with survey by William J. Bodine Jr., Zone RS-11, SDR 2014-10-1. Recommend an approval by Planning Commission Josh Taylor.
It's a triangle section that was never developed. It was supposed to have a street that cut through it, for a term, but it never got developed. The gentleman's been maintaining it for all these years, and he would like us to abandon it and incorporate it into his property. I know there was some discussion with the mayor and the owner where we would like to amend the ordinance and ask for the property that we're abandoning to be maintained in such a way that it doesn't affect site visibility from the intersecting streets, and no growth is allowed over 18 inches. So, can't go plant trees and big hedges or bushes in there that would affect site visibility where the streets tie in.
But if he did that anyway, wouldn't that be in violation of our landscaping laws? Would that respect...
No, landscape really doesn't reach out to single-family homes. This is a single-family.
That's just in the commercial.
Correct. Multi-family.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Are there any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing number five. An ordinance to amend number 3402 to provide for dumpsters on property with four, five, or six-unit multifamily dwellings. Lamar Marshall.
Yeah, and, 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 Mr. President, the ordinance is, is written in a way to allow the discretion of the city to determine based on, based on the ability or inability of the landlord or the tenants to maintain, you know, a clean, clean area, free litter. So, so, when we wrote the ordinance, it was designed to give the leverage to the city so that all, we didn't want to make it a situation where every single four-unit apartment complex or condo would have to have a dumpster. We wanted to allow that to be at the discretion based on the ability to comply with, with the trash ordinances that we have on the books. So, it was written, it said that all owners and occupants of multifamily dwellings with four, or five, or six living units in the building, or on one lot of wrecked may, in the interest of maintaining cleanliness, public health, and safety, and the removal of unsightly trash and rubbish, as determined by the city building officials, be required to use a dumpster on-site for the storage and removal of trash and rubbish. Location of the dumpster shall be approved by the city building official or his or her designate. So, it's written to allow the dialogue, negotiation, and flexibility, you know, based on cause and effect of what we deal with, and particularly right now with Rose St. Martin. We struggle because those, those condo units are four units, and basically, the landlords, they'll do not provide trash containers. The tenants don't provide trash containers. So, for all intended purposes, for the entire time, there's always trash in the front of the, of the area that wraps all the way around Rose St. Martin all the way to Old Berridge Highway. In some cases, we have some units where they've actually built permanent storage locations where trash is actually, I almost imagine in the front of your home is where you store all your trash cans, like at the curb in front of your house. That's where you actually store your trash. So, in the current situation, that's where trash is stored, sometimes in white bags, black bags, no bags. Sunday was, was because of the fact that we had no pickup on Thanksgiving, it was extremely difficult on Sunday. And we spent, I don't know, maybe three hours on Rose St. Martin just picking up trash because it had gotten that bad on that particular day. But this would give the, this would give the city the flexibility to help work and negotiate with landlords and tenants on how we actually can control trash in that area. So, I'm asking for your support of the ordinance, and it's one step, and the first step, and maybe how we can, can improve the area back there on Rose St. Martin.
I just have a few comments. I'm in favor of anything that helps trash. I'm just wondering, you know, we have an ordinance that specifies where dumpsters have to be placed. That is, they have to be placed behind a fence and gate so they cannot be viewed from the street.
Right.
So, I'm wondering if that should be, I don't know, I want to leave it to the discretion of the building official, since we already have an ordinance in place that specifies where they need to be.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's a good, you know, Mike, I, I think that, or Councilman Williams, I think that, you know, some of it has to be assumed that, you know, people are going to make rational decisions. And, and it says in the ordinance, and I think our current ordinance doesn't necessarily designate a place where a dumpster is supposed to be, but I would imagine that the city officials, the building officials are going to negotiate those in places where they, where they actually should be, because I don't necessarily know if it says it has to be in the rear of the property at present time.
It's been a while since we've, we've discussed this, but I, I remember discussing it, but...
That, that language is tracked off of the existing ordinance that applies to six units. So, you added ordinance, this, this just expands that to properties with four, or five, or six. The existing ordinance now is six or more, and that's the language that's in there now.
It does say that...
The location of the dumpster shall be approved by the city building official.
Same language now.
All right. And the only other suggestion I have, and again, I'm not opposing this at all, is maybe in places where they, it's not practical to have a dumpster, maybe we should require some type of trash can.
Well, and, and see, and I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Williams, but I've been talking to, you were going to say something?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Mayor Foster and I have been talking, and we actually had a discussion after the meeting last Tuesday with the current contractor that where they may be able to allow, in the case where a 75-gallon can would be more appropriate, that would be an option within the, within the, within the garbage pickup service. So, I'm sure that, that will be, so that, once again, it goes back to using the word "may" versus "shall," it gives the city the option to negotiate with that landlord in his faith so that we could maybe make the best decision, you know, for everybody.
That's all, Mike. Thank you.
That's good input. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? See, none. You shall now go into our regular session, roll call.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Pastor, here, Mr. Trump. Pastor, Pastor Kim Andrews from Hammond Father Christian Center.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we come to you thanking you right now, Father. Thanking you for helping strengthen our body. Thanking you for the darling son, Jesus, who paid the ultimate price on the price that we too would have access. Father God, I thank you that everything is done decent and all that pleasingly in your sight. We actually continue to bless our city, continue to strengthen those who are in government right now. Father God, we actually continue to bless the women and the children that protect us in our city and they control us through them. Father God, we know that we're not a perfect people, we strive for perfection, and we just ask you to continue to touch us, continue to guide us, continue to keep us right now. We thank you for your son who paid the ultimate price for us all. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
We will have a pledge of allegiance by Narita Connolly and Jolashia Connolly of Midway Elementary Right here. Right there. Okay.
I'll just move the flag.
Look this way, babe. Turn around. Okay, fly. Okay, go ahead. Let's hear it for the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now... This is for you. And this is for you. Any council reports? I have one. The African American Heritage Museum scheduling a holiday toast to Mayor Foster, Mason Foster. Mr. Dellis Don, Executive Director for the African American Heritage Museum and Veteran Archives has announced the executive board, and the Hammond City Council will host a holiday toast.
Oh, that was a roast.
Mason, H. Foster, Thursday evening, December 18th. The evening will begin with a tour of the museum and veteran archives properly at 6:30 PM. The holiday toast in the dinner theater will conclude the evening. There is no fee. Children under the age of 15 must be accompanied by parents or guardians. Those persons wishing to take part in the event and tour should call for a reservation That's 542-4259.
Seems like a little commercial, huh?
Yes.
That's your only reason.
All right. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very honored by that recognition. Couple of things that I have on the agenda, or that I would like to announce is, sales taxes were up for the month. These were for sales for the month of October. collections were $1,511,648, which was up 4.28 percent. Mr. Ball was talking about the Airport Tower and when would it be open, councilman? We are planning a ribbon-cutting on December 17th at 2 o'clock. Please, and we would ask the council, please, try to be there if you could. December 17th, airport ribbon-cutting, and the public is invited. One more announcement.
Good time. 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. Christmas is coming. Proud to announce that we received a letter today that we have been approved by the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Public Facilities Application of $1 million. So, I want to say thank you to Lacy, to Charles, and to everybody that helped put this application together. Chuck is here. Chuck's paying, didn't mean to leave you out of it, Chuck. And we were, we were hoping that we would get this in April, and this will be for the pre-treatment area for the sewer treatment facility, wastewater treated facility. So, today is a great day in the city of Hammond. A billion bucks. Thank you, Mike.
Are there any new businesses in town?
We hope so.
Okay. Who admits?
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, see, none. All business, none. New business, number one. A resolution to approve change order 3E adding $12,491 to the contract total for the air traffic control tower project 21302, subject to approval of the associated ordinance below. Jason Ball.
It's almost as if I could tell the future, huh? Like I said, everything I said before was the change order number three, adding the $12,491 for all the equipment that I spoke of before, and will be paid for by the transferring of the funds that we asked for before. That's all.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business number two. A resolution to approve the final acceptance of the air traffic control tower project.
The air traffic control tower project, like I said, the construction portion, which we were responsible for, is completed. We did the final walkthrough last week, and we nitpicked every little smudge and crack, everything we could find, and they, they went through and fixed everything. So, seeing no other things that, you know, were on the list, we decided to go ahead and accept the project as completed with your approval.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
New business number three. A resolution to authorize renewal of tax abatement for 1203 Martin Luther King Avenue owned by Terrace of Hammond Phase II LLPs, ACN.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in a while. This is the same as we've done in the past for restoration tax abatement. Restoration tax abatement is the only state incentive that can be utilized by residential also, and this is phase two of the Terrace of Hammond apartments that are being redone on Martin Luther King. It is a $4.6 million project, and they have filed and been approved on the state level for restoration tax abatement, and this is resolution that y'all are aware that, that this is being passed. Or being approved, I should say.
And this is for 10 years, is that correct?
10 years.
Actually, five plus.
Five, yeah, five plus. What they'll do is they'll evaluate in five years to make sure that they get the, the second portion. And they have a great, if y'all haven't seen the website, they have a website with a lot of photos, and that's a very good project, so...
Did you say they have a website?
Yeah, I googled Terrace of Hammond. If you Google Terrace of Hammond, it'll pop up, and it, and it shows you all of the options and the layouts and photos and stuff, so... I can't remember the website name.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business number four. A resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for $51,000 under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to purchase firefighting equipment for the Hammond Fire Department. Two, agreeing to a cash match of $5,100. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all directly documents. Charles Osho.
Good evening. This would, for your information, allow us to replace some equipment that's between 15 and 20 years old. Most of it would be hoses and associated equipment, nozzles, valves. Spoken with the chief and the fire department personnel, and this is what they would like to apply for this particular year.
And the match would come from...
Match would come from the fire department's budget.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business number five. A resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract with Livingston Waste to accept the debt of $2,095 per month for allowance of roll-off cans for recycling.
As you, as the council may recall, we took vids on both solid waste disposal and recycling at the last meeting. The Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee suggested to us that we look into whether or not it would be feasible to replace the bins with a roll-off can. I did talk to Jack Fridge, he's the owner, and he is here tonight, of Livingston Waste. They have made a proposal to the city of Hammond for $1.10 a month, they will provide a 35-gallon recycling, emphasize recycling, roll-off can, it'd be blue with the recycle thing on it, and if the council so chooses to move forward with that, it would raise, it would increase the price to $2.95, but the administration does recommend approval.
Mr. President, I have, I have an email from a constituent. She would like to be read, so I will. Secretary Janobel, 110 Granby Drive, says, please read my comments to the record. I am very much concerned with recycling and the litter situation in the city of Hammond. Citizens who recycle are responsible and very responsible about picking up recycled matter that ends up in a yard or street. This is an unnecessary extra expense. This is an unnecessary extra expense. This added expense can save the citizens nearly one hundred dollars every four years. To those on a limited budget, this is costly. Extra recycle bins that are currently used can be obtained to deal with this. I would appreciate the council's consideration. Secretary of State, Genova.
I will go on record saying that I'm in favor of this, Mr. Vic. I follow your, uh, suggestion. I just, as I said, would, uh, I was requested to read that.
Yes, I read it. Again, Vic Cuviel, eight oh two, Ruquean. The other day, I made my first trip to a local coffee shop, which I will not name, and I paid three dollars and ninety-five cents for a cup of coffee, and I don't even drink coffee. If someone can't afford a dollar and ten cents more a month to clean up this, I'm sorry, some of the neighborhoods in the city are absolutely filthy. As I witnessed today, when we went and did some great work, by the way, Lacy, in, uh, in, uh, Clark Street Park, which I think all of you are aware of. I'll let maybe Lacy talk about that later. But I still contend, and I think others do too, that I don't think a dollar and ten cents a month is going to break anybody. If they do, I'd be happy to cover a couple of them. Don't put, don't put that in the plate, Jake.
How many would you want to cover?
What's? But, but really, what's a whole dollar and ten cents a month? That's just my opinion. And while I'm up here, this is Louise Bostic. Dr. Bostic was not here. I was gonna stay, say in her stead. The, there's a lot of ambiguity with our dumpster laws, and it's probably one of those things, it's, uh, it would take Solomon and all his wisdom to solve it. Thank goodness Chucky's Restaurant moved because they were following the law. The dumpster was behind the place, but you had to look upon mounds and mounds of trash every time you went down Morrison. In your wisdom, those of you who are, be back in office next year, I might suggest that you revisit the dumpster laws again. And maybe make some provisions to do something besides a picket fence around a dumpster which does little or no good. Thanks for your time.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. Um, Mayor Foster, I don't know if the, uh, the owner can address it or not, but. So right now, the, we're gonna have this, obviously, this new blue recycle can that's gonna be a roll can. And, and is that going to be provided for every, every single, you know, paying customer as a part of them?
Yes.
And, and, um, they are only going to be, obviously, used for recycling. So what happens when, uh, a renter, let's just use that for an example, that doesn't have a can, decides to use their roll-away can for garbage? What do we do and how does that?
I asked the exact same question, Councilman, and so I'll let Jack answer it because he gave me a great answer.
Before they dump the can, they open the lid and check it, and if, if there's any kind of contamination, which is just regular garbage or food waste, anything like that, they'll tag the can. And just, it's like a hoops tag, awareing them that, that it's not recycling, that we can't take it.
So then will the garbage company then dump that can?
No.
So then it sits in that, I'm just, I'm just kinda thinking about it in some different scenarios, how that becomes, you know, how are we gonna address that? Because I can, I can already see, uh, you know, that becoming, uh, an issue because.
Councilman Camelot, I don't mean to cut you off, but Camelot, the Bay Organs, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
We'll just, we'll just deal with that when we face it.
So I think, uh, I think it would be really good for us to do, um, an educational thing for, especially when we have these multi-unit areas, so that people understand that this is really wanna be for this, and maybe some type of a campaign to say, make sure you understand. And maybe even having a landlord discussion so that everyone understands, because all of a sudden, I'll get this, a, a lot of cans being delivered. Because what I see in some areas where we have multi-family units, there may not be recycling bins. All of a sudden, we have these larger recycling bins that might become more attractive for people to use. So I think we have to really, I would just suggest that we look at how.
We'd like to, we'd like to go to schools and different things and educate everyone.
Talking about the tenants.
Well, yeah, and we have no problem with going and educating the people, and, and that's something that we'd like to do is cut costs for y'all as much as possible. I mean, um, and by doing that is by recycling. Um, it'll cut the disposal cost, and we, uh, we hope to, you know, increase the participation rate by going to different events and promoting it.
So you brought up another question I had. Um, if, if we increase our recycling and that reduces our, do we actually pay an addition? Is a part of our contract negotiation with our, uh, with our garbage collection company, the amount of tonnage or whatever that we have to, that we have to actually dispose of?
It's included in the contract.
So if we have a, if we see where our recycling efforts pick up and the reduction is in, in the amount that we actually have to, you know, dispose of, are we, do we have an option to renegotiate our, our contract if that, if that happens?
Uh, we act, we could, let me think about that. Probably not. It's a five-year contract. Uh, and in the bid document, it did say they were responsible for, uh, solid waste disposal. They take it to the landfill based on Tangee Pro Parish landfill.
Right.
Um, so if they're able to reduce the tonnage, uh, it would endear to their benefit.
And it would actually benefit us in the next, re, the next contract we're renegotiating.
It depends on how that contract is written. We could write it with tonnage, but I would, even though I'm not gonna be here, I would recommend we not do that. Jackson Business, he might want to comment on that. I, I, you know, then you have to start measuring tonnage, and that's really an issue.
Any other questions?
What is your last name?
Fridge, F R I D G.
When do you anticipate delivering these, uh, cans?
We're gonna get them to y'all the first week of January, first and second week of January.
What if, um, just hypothetically, was somebody requesting an extra can? Is that gonna be?
Uh, that won't be a problem. Uh, we can get them an extra can. Um, that'd be fine.
How big is thirty-five gallon? I think that's be, I mean, probably sufficient.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty much double the size of the bins that they're using now.
I, I do have one, one last question for me. So what happens to the green containers now?
They, they belong to, um, progressive waste.
They're my people on one last.
I don't, I don't know. I've been trying to get in touch with Dustin now for two weeks and not talked to him.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Wait.
We, uh.
No, it's okay. Okay.
Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I came in so late. I'm sorry. Hope I can, my brain is sharp enough to even ask the question. The, um, over in the Iowa district where I spend a lot of time, we probably have, well, I have no recycling containers. I've never had any at any of my properties. And, uh, we probably have, I see maybe one out of ten over there. Is there some, um, discretion as to where these are left, or are they left at every address that pays a water bill?
They're left at every address is what was in, in negotiations.
Okay, and.
And if you don't want it, you know, just let us know, and we'll be glad to have them come pick it up.
Well, there aren't any, so, uh, there's no problem about picking them up. We, uh, I've always kind of wondered about that. Um, the, the other question I have, I think you may have already answered before I got here, and if I do, if you have, I apologize. I'm sorry. My name is Louise Bostic, one twelve, I'm driving. We, we have garbage cans over in that area where I work most of the time, and we spray large house numbers on the side because our garbage cans are frequently stolen. That, that always was a very odd thing to me, um, that garbage cans were, were taken. But they, they are in very quickly. So I think related to what, uh, Mr. Marshall was asking, these are, these look like little plums out there dangling before our garbage can thieves. I'm wondering, how did they, how did the, uh, people answer this question when these garbage cans go away?
I don't think we ever asked, we would do the replacement strategy if they were stolen. I don't think no one asked.
They're used for, like, when we move, when we frequently move, we put things in those garbage cans, uh, to pack. There are very many, there are many reasons that they are taken, but it's a, it's a real nuisance. That's why we have those ugly cans with the big numbers sprayed on them.
Do you have any response?
Yes, ma'am. What we do the first, the first time it's stolen, we replace it at no charge. Second time, it's the cost of the, of the cart. But y'all don't have carts for, for the garbage service though, right? It'd be just for the recycling? Okay, yeah, but that's how we do it is.
That's charged to the.
To the customers.
To the customer.
Yep.
New business number six. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative endeavor agreement between the state of Louisiana, Department of Transportation and Development, and the city of Hammond to provide for the transfers of state highways three two six zero and one zero six five into the city of Hammond Street system.
You ready, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, just as the city of Hammond, when we, uh, when we give something away, we can't call it a donation. We have to have, uh, a reason to work with somebody on how we exchange that particular piece of property. We will have a discussion about that on, in just a few minutes. And what this, uh, intergovernmental cooper, cooperative endeavor agreement does is just that, is that it provides a mechanism. If the council choose to allow us to move forward with the, uh, acceptance of, uh, what we consider, uh, North Cherry Street and, uh, Church Street Extension into the city system, uh, then we would do so through this cooperative endeavor agreement with the O T D. It's a partner arrangement with the partners that is proposed tonight.
So how is that, just, how is that remaining on a, like, on the state's system? Then they just take the highway designation off?
Yes, sir.
As referred to then as Church Street Extension?
That's correct. It would no longer exist on the state highway system.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Okay, that concludes new business number, final adoption of orders, nine, old business, number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the acceptance of property from the state of Louisiana for road transfer credits and to provide for related matters. Mayor Foster.
Would you want more discussion on that?
So move. Second.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
New business, number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the budget for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen to divun and abolish the part-time position of Department's Secretary of Fire Department.
Motion to approve. Yep.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
New business number two. You can read it as stated.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
New business number three. Final adoption of an ordinance to approve revocation of a zero point two three six acre portion of Pine Crest Drive and Oak Hollow Drive right-of-way and minor resubdivision of Lot twenty-five and propose abandonment right-of-way into Lot twenty-five A, a Oak Ridge subdivision requested by Michael and Ben Caliman, located at five sixteen Pine Crest Drive, all in accordance with survey by William J. Bodine Junior. Zone RS dash eleven, S D R two thousand fourteen dash ten dash one, recommended approval by planning commission.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, we would like, the administration would like to ask the council to amend the ordinance, uh, to add the wording with the restriction for growth no greater than eighteen inches.
So move as amended. Second.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
As amended.
Is that okay?
As amended.
What you, what, what really turned out was a motion to approve it with the height restriction. And that's how the amendment.
New business number four. Final adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance number three four zero two to provide for dumpsters on property with four, five, or six unit multi-family dwellings.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance is set a public hearing. And number one, introduction of an ordinance to declare the following vehicles as surplus property. You can read that.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood, Bobby Martin, Lamar Marshall, Mike Williams. Motion approved. Public hearing is set for December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen.